Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome, we're getting started here. Welcome to the Canyon City Planning Commission Meeting Tuesday, July 18th, 2017. I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, will you call roll, please?
Certainly, good evening. I have Vice Chair Maloney.
Here.
Commissioner Bates.
Here.
Commissioner Dorito.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Excuse.
Excused absence. Commissioner Hamrick, excused absence. Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Ladue.
Here.
And Councilmember Gill is excused absence also.
Okay, so we have two of our three new members here, Mr. Councilman Dorito, Commissioner Dorito, sorry, not councilman yet, right? And Commissioner Rick Harmon, welcome.
Thank you.
You came on a very exciting night, I can tell.
Very much. I see that.
So, I now ask for approval of the minutes from the June 20th, 2017 regular meeting. Are there any corrections? Oh, I'm gonna backtrack. So, tonight's another special night, we have an election of officers. So, it's that time of year where we're gonna elect Chairman and Co-Chair. So. Okay, so now I open the floor for nominations for Chairman. Are there any nominations for Chairman?
Make a nomination for Jerry Maloney to be Chair.
I'm sorry, for who's that?
You.
Oh, me, okay. Okay, are there any further nominations? Okay.
I second that.
Okay, do we need to vote on that? Or is that just... Terry, do we need to vote on the...
If there is only one nomination and no others, you may do it by acclamation.
Okay. So, by acclamation, Board Member Gerald Maloney will serve as Chairman for a term expiring June 30th, 2017. I now open the floor for nominations for Vice Chairman. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd nominate John Hamrick.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, so that was easy. By acclamation, Board Member John Hamrick will serve as Vice Chairman for a term expiring June 30th, 2017, so someone should let him know.
We will do that. Let me just correct that, that the terms are ending June 30th, 2018.
Oh, 2018, I apologize. My notes are incorrect.
No worries.
Okay, I now ask for approval of minutes from the June 20th, 2017 regular meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Whoever was here that read them. Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes, please.
Make the motion, we approve the minutes of June 20th, 2017.
I will second that. Seconded by John, Commissioner Hamrick. Denise, will you call roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda tonight, Zone Code Amendment. To establish regulations for commercial mobile radio services, service facilities. Ms. Bernath?
Yes, I have a... This is a public hearing, however, we are requesting to table this to our special meeting that we have talked to you guys about on July 26th.
Okay, do we need a motion to table?
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to table.
Until June, what was the date, Terry? Of July 26th.
July 26th.
Okay, Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Denise, call roll.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
All right, moving right along. Next item, number six, public hearing.
Number five.
Oh, sorry, number five. So, for those of you don't know, it's my first time as Chairman. So, please bear with me, it'll be all right. Okay, the next hearings were, public hearing. Minor subdivision, Ninth Street West, the re-subdivision of Lot 4, Fremont County Family Center, planned unit development. Ms. Bernath?
Yes, sir, this is a public hearing, however, that application has been withdrawn, we've had to leave it on the agenda because it was originally, it was published, so public notice was given, and so we are withdrawing that application now, and we can move on to the next item.
Okay, so no further actions required on that one. Okay. Item number six, public hearing, zone change from R1, planned unit development, to C, commercial, Lot 4, Fremont County Family Center, planned unit development. Ms. Bernath, again.
We are requesting again to table this to August 15th, to work out some issues with the applicant. So, and if I might, may I also add item number seven, and if you guys do a motion to table, we can combine those two things. So, the zone change from R2 to MH1, and MH1 to R3 for Lot 1, Oasis New Horizons, has also been requested to be tabled until August 15th.
So, I'd like to call for a motion to table both item number six and item number seven on our agenda till August 15th.
Let's make the motion.
Make a motion to table items six and seven on the agenda until the August 15th meeting.
And I will second that.
Denise, call roll, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
All right, I'm pretty sure we are at item number eight on our agenda. All right, so I'd like to open the public hearing. Special review use, accessory dwelling unit at 696 North Reynolds Avenue. I'd like to open the public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, first I'd like to just ask, is the applicant's representative here, Chris Vodapich? This is a request for special review use in accessory dwelling unit on Lot 30 in the Reynolds subdivision. The zoning is R2. Written notice was mailed as required by law. The Shagleys, who are here, have made a request to establish an accessory dwelling unit at this location. It's about a three-acre parcel. The current home, there is actually a current home there, and that's the home that they would like to make the accessory dwelling unit. Their plans are to build another home on the property as well, that would be the principal dwelling, and then the existing home at about 900 square feet would be the accessory dwelling. There's access to the property, ample off-street parking is available, surrounding land uses are residential. There's R1 low-density and R2 medium-density residential, there's existing water and sanitation And one of the things that we want to note, it's usually, this is done a little bit, it's an unusual application in that the accessory dwelling unit is being requested prior to the principal dwelling unit being on the property. So, these things have to happen pretty much simultaneously, so the ADU can't be approved until such time as there is a principal dwelling on the property. The existing property also, or the existing house also has to go through something called a, getting a certificate of compliance, so there'll be a home inspection. Our building department goes out to make sure that everything is okay, and that there's a healthy, or health and safety issues are addressed in that particular dwelling unit. They also have to comply with fire district standards, sanitation district standards, water, and that kind of thing as well. We have referral comments, the fire district in particular has indicated that there's gonna be an impact fee, there'll have to be a fire hydrant put in. That's for the applicant to work out with the fire district, and the sanitation district also requires a system development fee. As far as size, location, traffic circulation, location and amount of parking, all of that is good, we don't have any issues around environmental influences, these are residential uses. But we do have several conditions of approval, and again, it all has to do with kind of permitting, making sure that the principal dwelling is permitted at the same time as the ADU is permitted. So, the first recommended condition of approval is that the applicant get a certificate of compliance for the accessory dwelling unit that already exists, that they get building, electrical, and plumbing permits for any alterations or construction that might be necessary to get that certificate of compliance. They need to comply with all of the requirements of the sand district and also the fire district. And that... That the existing single-family home can be converted to an ADU upon the construction of the new single-family home. And both of those, the ADU has to get the certificate of compliance, and the new house has to get a certificate of occupancy. Response to our notice, we mailed 21 property homeowners within 300 feet, there have been no inquiries and no objection, well, there were two inquiries and no objections. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, there's some other supporting documentation in the staff packet. Appendix A for the ADU, your advisory report, you'll do findings of fact in an advisory report, which comes right after your staff report, some area zoning information, and then their application.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for staff from the commission? I have a question then, so the big weirdness here is that the certificate of completion and the ADU have to kind of be done simultaneously when the new single-family residence is completed?
Yes.
Okay.
They should be done very soon thereafter from each other.
Is that really just a technicality, or is it, I mean, is it an issue with the house right now being lived in, not being lived in?
Well, it can be lived in now, because there's not another house on the property, but once another house goes on to the property, it has to be, it has to get that certificate of compliance so that it can become the accessory dwelling unit, or otherwise, no, it can't be lived in.
So, basically doing, simultaneously doing the new house and working on the existing house?
Correct.
And that, okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Ms. Shagley, do you have any questions concerning this at this time?
I have questions, I just wanted to clarify something, the small house, yes, it is currently lived in, it's in its 14th year of rental by the same person. We did bring it up to code when we bought that lot about, or that parcel about 17 years ago from the abbey, and at that time, we remodeled it, so I don't see any problems at all in bringing that, you know, passing the inspection or whatever. And the only other one, thing I wanted to say, you've got the, I don't know if you call it the blueprint, the whatever, the picture of the area, and it does denote that the chicken coops are the barn, but it isn't. The barn is a historical barn that's on that property, and that's the white roof that you see in the picture, and then the chicken coops are gonna go kind of alongside our new house. Lovely, huh? So, I, that's all I've got, unless you have questions for us. And I'm gonna wring Chris's neck for not being here.
Okay.
So, anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience? Yes, I have a question. Yes, please, podium, state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name's Dory, and I'm at 606 Fay Avenue, and I just had a question, you wanna move your chicken coop, you said, to next to your new building? Or is it gonna, you're gonna keep that historical chicken coop? Okay, you're gonna keep the historic of it? Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
All right, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions for staff or from the audience, I'd like to close this public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? At this time, I'd like, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the special review use accessory dwelling unit at 696 North Reynolds Avenue.
I'll make a motion to set, to approve the special review use accessory dwelling unit at 696 North Reynolds Avenue for the Shagleys.
Thank you, Commissioner Dorito. Second from Commissioner Bates. Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have, did, are we going by our motions on the findings of fact and advisory report?
Yes, please, let's back up. Commissioner Dorito, in your packet for 696...
North Reynolds Avenue?
Yeah, let me, let me kind of go through this for you guys, 'cause we're gonna be referring to this every, every time as we're, as we, as you guys make these decisions. At the end of your staff report, you have something called an advisory report, or findings of fact and advisory report. Can you find that? Kind of let me know, have you, are you, are you there? When you, you'll be making your motions off of these reports, and usually, there are two motions.
Okay.
There's one that establishes the findings, and then the second will make the recommendation, and if there are any conditions, that second motion will contain those. So, I'm gonna ask that you back up, and we'll start the motion over, and you can read from that motion.
Okay.
You'll have to fill in kind of the blanks, and I have done that in a way for you with the standards and criteria, but you may change that in any way you wish.
Okay, so I make a motion that the City, Canyon City Planning Commission, following consideration of the above-captured special review use request, and after considering the testimony presented by applicant, city staff, and any other interested parties, finds as following. Notice of the public, public meeting was properly given as required by law. The application does comply with all requirements. The application is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinances as declared in Section 17.04.020 of the CCMC in the following respects. The applicant has addressed the location, nature of the request, the character of the surrounding property, to assure that the proposed use will be compatible with surrounding land use and the goal of promoting coordinated and sound development of the neighborhood. And the special review use is designed to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and the area of its location in the following respects. Use will not generate objectionable noise, odor, or other influence, nor negatively impact availability of parking for the surrounding area. And then do I tie the second motion?
No, you're gonna...
No, stop there.
Yes.
Okay.
There you go, Jerry will take over from there.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Bates, did you second that? Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Okay, second part of the motion, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the findings of fact.
Okay, therefore, based upon the findings of fact, and after having considered the, considering the development features of the proposed use, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the City Council. Approval of the special use review, approval of the special review use request without modification or conditions, or...
Number two, yeah.
I'm sorry. Approval of the special review use request with the following conditions. The applicant shall comply with all the requirements of Chapter 1715 accessory dwelling units of the Canyon City zoning regulations, in particular, Section J dot 2 dash 6. All requirements of Section J dot 2 dash 6 shall be completed, and a certificate of compliance shall be obtained prior to or simultaneously with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the new single-family home. The applicant shall obtain all required building, electrical, and plumbing permits for any construction alterations that may be necessary for compliance with this section. The applicant shall comply with any and all requirements of the Fremont Sanitation District and the Canyon City Area Fire District, unless otherwise modified by this approval or their subsequent decision of the city. The council, as it may apply for the request, all material representations made by the applicant in its application submittal and/or in public hearing shall be binding upon the applicant. The applicant's failure to perform in accordance with such material representations could result, result in the revocation of this approval. The approval herein granted shall extend only to the ADU plan as it is presented in this application. The existing single-family home shall be converted to an ADU upon the construction of the new single-family home. Said approval shall terminate without any further action by the city if the new proposed single-family home and the existing structure have not received a certificate of occupants, occupancy, and certificate of compliance respectively within 18 months of the approval.
I will second that.
Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
All right, we are on to item number nine. Public hearing. Zone change from R1 to RL at 441 Four Mile Lane to remove the dual zoning. I'd like to open this public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. Is the applicant here?
City is the applicant in this particular request. This is a zone change request, there is a property at 441 Four Mile Lane that is dual-zoned, and the reason that it is, is that back in 2010, there was a preliminary plan that was approved for 65 lots on this particular piece of property, and about three or four to the south. That preliminary plan was never approved, but the zoning was approved to take it to R1, and that resulted in a dual zoning on this property. Those properties to the south, and you'll see that in your, in your application or your staff packet, those items that are shaded in red, those were put back the way they should have been, back to RL, and for some reason, the property to the north never was. So, this is, we're asking that this be corrected, and take all of that property back to RL, and remove the dual zoning. I'll answer any other questions, but this is basically correcting something that should have been corrected some time ago.
Seems simple enough, are there any questions from the commission for staff?
Yes, sir.
Property owners aware?
Yes, they are, they actually signed a consent to rezone.
Any other questions? I'd like to call for a motion.
I move that the Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing on the above-captured zone change from dual R1, what was, we're going from what? Oh, the mixed zoning to an R1.
Excuse me, I need to change that, that's incorrect, it should be, requested zoning is RL.
RL. All right, I make a motion that, that we, upon conducting a public hearing, which we have, on the above-captured zone change, and after considering the testimony presented by the applicant, the city staff, and any other interested parties, find that the land to be rezoned was zoned in error, and as presently zoned is inconsistent with the policies and goals of the city's comprehensive plan, master plan. Due to a subdivision process occurring in 2010 that was never finalized, the zoning connected with it was premature, and so the R1 zoning was placed on the property in error.
That's the extent, yes, number one.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second, Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
Okay, I now call for a motion and a second on the request based upon the findings.
I move that we make the following recommendations to the Council of the City of Canyon City, approve, approval of the request for rezoning.
Second it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bates. Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Bates.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Public hearing. Zone change from R2 TMU to R3 TMU at 615 Pike Avenue, better known as Saints' Galastica. Like to open the public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. Terry, should we start with the staff report, or did you want to?
That's entirely up to you, if you would like to, we can do that, or...
Well, we talked...
Yes, we did.
So, I guess first I'd like to ask the applicant to approach the podium. Please state your name and address and affiliation.
Michael Butler, Colorado Springs. I, I am the proposed buyer of the property, I know there was some, some information circulated that I owned the property, but I do not. Did you want me to... Did you want me to just go over the concept?
Yes.
Okay.
Make your presentation, please.
Sure. So basically, I, I own property here in this town now, mobile home parks, and I've noticed the need for housing here. So the economics of the community to bring in a lot of new housing without having some kind of government program would, would not be feasible. And so I noticed this property about a year ago, and I started working with Kurt Serby, who's here, and thought that maybe I can turn this property around, as I've done before, and put in a blended community, shall I say. And the blended community would consist of the dormitories being age 55-plus, which we're scheduled to do 42 units out of a 50-unit dorm right now. When that's done, we will move to a second and third phase. The second phase would be to restore the, the historical home, and that would be our premium luxury apartments. And in that second phase, we were looking at restoring the pool, the theater, the gym, the weight room, and all those facilities. And I was currently talking to Terry them about sharing that access with the community, which will, in my opinion, I thought it would be beneficial to the city to have access to those facilities rather than you guys happen to issue a bond package and build those from scratch. So I can restore them, and it also makes great amenities for the people that's gonna be living there. My third phase would be townhouses, and these are three-bedroom, two-bath townhouses, I'm sorry, 1.5 bath. And those are gonna be no more than two stories. So any buildings that we build there, there's not gonna be higher than the dormitory itself that's there. Because I feel that that would take away from the integrity of the community in the surrounding area. With that said, I think we can get about 32 units there, and these are gonna be marketed to younger families, like your schoolteachers, who may be a single mom who lives off of a $35,000 salary, who cannot afford a $300,000, $400,000 house, or even a $270,000 house. And so I thought about that, and I said, well, you know, what could happen in those townhouses would be, it's affordable housing. I, I kept hearing comments of low-income housing, and this is affordable housing. People are gonna have to work to be able to afford to live in this community. And so just having the mixture of more seniors, more age 55-plus people there, the community will begin to police itself. Over the year that I've been negotiating this deal, you, the building has just continued to go downhill. I mean, every time I walked through, it became more evidence to me that it's an environmental hazardous. I even bought my environmental guy here, and if you guys have any questions, you can talk to him about the, it's labeled now a spill site, basically. So by it being a spill site, you know, with the asbestos and lead that's in there, it's only gonna get worse. And, you know, I don't know if that's gonna leak out into water supplies or get out of there, you know, some way, somehow, but, you know, for the last few times I've been in this building, guys, I can tell you, there has been used condoms, there have been people hiding in bushes behind this building, there have been all kinds of things that I've seen. And I know that without having families there and age 55-plus people there who can self-police themselves to a certain extent, then it's just gonna further deteriorate. Either way, if you tore this place down, you will still have to deal with the asbestos and lead remediation, which costs hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So some of the comments I heard, well, why don't we turn it back into a park? Well, it's still gonna cost a lot of demo costs just to remove all this stuff. So I wanna turn it back into a community that people can be proud to live in. So, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Butler. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
One of the things I've, I've heard is that there's traffic problems and parking problems and that. What is your envision for parking on this project?
So if you're standing in front of the dorm section, we're gonna start with the dorms first. So on the left-hand side where you have the open fill, that's all the parking we need to accommodate the dorm area. For the, the facilities such as the gym and, and recreation facilities, we were talking to Terry about having off-screen parking over there, right in front of there that we can use to, so that anyone from the community can not have to enter the entire site and actually park there. For the townhouses, all of those are gonna be interior parking spaces. So we, we envision having covered parking and interior parking that's labeled for that particular unit. My architect is here also, he has the, a schematic of the parking that we envision too, if any of you guys have any questions.
Any other questions from the commission?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I guess, why the R3 request versus just bringing a TMU to the city?
You know, I, I don't know. I, I talked to Terry about it, and that was their recommendation that I go to R3, so I, I thought it would fit into R2 TMU for what I wanna do. Because I'm not building high-story or high-rise buildings there, so none of the buildings I'm gonna be building is over two stories. These are just townhouses. Everything else that's already there is taller than what I'm gonna build.
Is this gonna be, this is a staged process, phased process, excuse me? Is there anything, anything that would prevent Phase Two from happening, Phase Three from happening? Anything that would leave it open-ended on the end, so that if it went to R3, somebody else would come along and take a portion of it, or, you know what I'm saying? And do what they wanna do with R3?
No, and I expect that you probably wanna do some type of restrictive amendment for me to have that in place if you grant the zoning. And I'm okay with that, because to me, to build anything over three stories would take away from the integrity of the surrounding community.
How about open space? Any plans, no plans to demolish anything, I believe, correct?
No, not at this time.
And the space you have, the pool and the, the learning center, can you get a little bit more into how you would like to use those? You said for community benefit also, but how, how do you picture that all happening?
Well, you know, it's kind of like, maybe have a membership access to the community for, you know, 10 bucks a month or something. I don't know. I was talking to the, the city about actually sharing some type of revenue-sharing agreement if I turned those over to the city. You know, that's kind of like, just, to me, that's a bonus for anyone who's gonna live there. I'm gonna have to fix those up anyway, if I can't work out something with the city and the surrounding community for those.
And you wouldn't be opposed to a planned development of some sort? Instead of doing it as a R3, you wouldn't be opposed to an R2 with a planned development?
No, not if it allows me to go the two stories that I need. I'm okay with that. The, the current concept is 80 to 92 units, and so 32 of those units are townhouses. The rest is already there.
Terry, how many, how many units, houses would there be in a typical block about that size, do you know?
Well, that was in our staff report. The most dense surrounding this right now is an R2, and it's got about 16, 17 units
Okay, any other questions from the commission at this time? If not, it might be a good time to get a staff report. Ms. Bernath?
Sure. This is a public hearing for a zone change request from R2 in the TMU overlay to R3 in the TMU overlay. Written notice was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet, and the property was posted as required by law. This is a seven-and-a-half acre parcel that was a former girls' boarding school, less than a half a mile north of the historic Main Street. The parcel contains at least six separate buildings and most recently functioned as a residential treatment center of sorts. I've never gotten a very good explanation of what occurred there. The property has been vacant since 2008. The largest building is the dormitory with a footprint of about 14,000 square feet. We've got a combined footprint of all the buildings at about 53,000 square feet, and the combined square footage in total is 117,000. This includes the historic building, the gym, the pool, chapel, library, classrooms. It's zoned R2 and is located in the Transitional Mixed Use Overlay Zone. That was placed on the property in 2004 and allows for a site-specific mixed-use development or a site-specific plan that encompasses a use or uses that are not allowed in the underlying zone district. We've chosen to suggest that Mr. Butler keep the TMU on top of this property because we think that the TMU ultimately is a very good way for him to do a, a comprehensive plan. And let me interject here in that when Mr. Butler first approached us, there, the idea was that he could do our, a TMU project in R2 or rezone to R3. It was suggested to him that R3 might be a quicker way for him to get into the dormitory and get that process going, the demo and building. He has to do a site plan for that, and he has to do a demo, he has to achieve his parking and everything, but he could do that and then work on a comprehensive plan as he's progressing with that building. So it allowed him to get going faster. That was the point of having the R3. So, let me move on here. The surrounding land use is a small lot, single-family residential. Most of it is older housing stock. There is some infill. Building heights are one, one and a half, two, and two and a half stories. Surrounding zoning is R1 and R2, and it's interspersed with just a little bit of R3 and R1A. You can see that in the zoning map, and I apologize for our copies. We're gonna have to get much better on color copies because some of that coding doesn't, is not coming through for you guys to see that. But that zoning is up there, and I can, I'll put it up again. There have been numerous code enforcement issues over the last several years. Vagrancy, theft out of the buildings that has caused the asbestos to become friable or exposed. We've had a lot of code enforcement issues there and some police activity as well. And the property's been for sale for the last several years. There are two special review use approvals. Our special review use approvals never go away necessarily, so there is still that one on it for the junior, senior high school with boarding, which was for Saint's Glastica Academy, and that went into effect in 1983. There's also one for '84 that allowed a preschool. Not sure how that was, or it certainly never has occurred in the last probably 20 years or so, but that approval is on there as well. And as I said, he, and I'll just back up, I'm, I'm working with Mr., with Mr. Butler's site plan, which I had several copies of here for people to look at. It actually shows 41 in two-bedroom apartments in Phase One. Phase Two is to renovate the historic school building into about eight apartments. And then the last is his townhomes towards the north end of the property that are about eight fourplexes. So that turns out to be 80 units, and that's what we're going with the request on. He has indicated as a justification, as everyone does when they come in and ask for a rezoning, that the applicant, that the area has changed or is changing to such a degree that it's in the public interest to encourage redevelopment, and his justification is that the, the need for affordable housing. And I would have to say that we do not disagree with that. We are, even back in 2001, our comprehensive plan indicated that we were, the city was not providing, did not have enough housing stock for affordable housing in a mix of price ranges. That still holds true today. We just finished a housing needs assessment for another project and found that we do not have enough affordable housing or rentals in this community. And that information is in here, in the staff report for you. I wanted to touch on a couple of things, and one of the things that has to do with the conditions that we are suggesting. It's really important that when we talk about this, and I think Mr. Butler appreciates this, that when we are considering a zone change, there are aspects of the R3 zoning that are not conducive to the neighborhood that this property is located in. In particular with the proposed possible density that could occur, as well as the building height. And so the staff is suggesting that those two things be limited, and the conditions state that, but that R3 offers him a housing type that is not allowed in R2. We also would request that he comes in and does either a TMU, a PUD, or even what we call the Plan Development District, and do a comprehensive plan for this, not exceed 92 units, dwelling units, and not exceed two and a half stories. Now, what may occur with the other buildings there, if they turn into something like recreation, is completely unknown at this time. The city has gone over and taken a look at this property, but we, the, the city's made no determination whatsoever, and you might wanna, this is Deana Swetler.
Sure. Deana Swetler, Community Development Director. I'll just add that there are two other components going on right now. So one is the impending community survey that is about to be released to the community, and results of that are due around Labor Day. And in that survey, there are specific questions in regards to recreational facilities and programs. And one of the questions was added in specifically about how people feel about rehabilitating and repairing the existing Saint's Glastica Gymnasium and Pool for Community Recreation Center, along with two other rec center-related questions. So one, we wanna get the results back from that community survey, which again, from what I understand, are due in around Labor Day. Secondly, the city is about to undertake or putting together on the background to go out and have a consultant do a needs assessment and a feasibility study for a recreation center for the community. And that will take some time to get the RFP out, have a consultant onboard, have them do that study, and get the results in. So until those two aspects are completed, we really wouldn't take any further kind of serious look at the property. You know, we understand the applicant's offer, and as stated, there was a group of folks that went out recently and looked at the various buildings on the property, so we are aware of it. But given these two items that I just mentioned, that will take some time to complete those two items and get those results back before we would move any further with the kind of specific city due diligence specifically on those buildings.
Okay, thank you. Were you done also, Terry? Or did you have?
I guess the only other, no, I, I think I'll leave it at that. I just wanna make sure that you're aware that your findings of fact and advisory report is right at the end of the staff report for you. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. I also wanted to let you know, as you can tell from the people who are here, they didn't come to, for the nuisance ordinance on item number 11, so-
Are you sure? Are you sure? That should be-
I'm pretty sure not.
That should be-
But we did have many phone inquiries. We did meet with some folks from the neighborhood who had concerns. Those are listed- Those are listed in your staff report. And we hope that we have certainly addressed some of those things in the conditions that we are suggesting. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them if we can.
Does the commission have any questions for the staff at this time? Commissioner Liddo.
What is the timing difference from doing a TMU under the R2 versus the proposed faster version of an R3 zone change? What is that? What kind of time difference are we actually talking about?
Well, I don't know. That's really kind of up to Mr. Butler. In this particular case, if he receives a zoning, a zone change in... I mean, I'm just hypo... This is hypothetical. If he receives a zone change approval in August, he would submit a site plan and a building permit simultaneously to Planning and Zoning and our building department. He would go through a site plan and then start his renovation of that building as soon as he's able to do that. And he has a site plan that meets our requirements. And our main thing that we would be talking about in that dormitory conversion would be a good parking plan. And so we would be looking at that and lighting and some other things that we have very basic site plan requirements at this point. So he would be doing that. If he had to, if he was going to stay with R2 and do the TMU, the entire project would have to be planned. And he would go to Planning Commission. He would go to Planning Commission and possibly council for that. Generally, it's Planning Commission that approves the TMU. But in this case, I would recommend that it also, given the nature of it and its... The importance of it as an infill site, that it would also go to council for approval. And you guys would do the recommendation. So that's what would be involved. And I'm sure that that planning portion at that, of the entire thing, would take longer than what I described going through R3. But that's my estimation.
But I also want to repeat that, I mean, based on staff's recommendations, our recommendations are to couple whatever underlying zoning it is with a TMU, a PUD, or a PPD.
And then...
In addition to the other two conditions as Terry outlined.
The preliminary plans that we have, if it was the TMU, remained the TMU and went through the entire site plan. That exact, let's say it was exact, it was a final, that could be built, whether it was the TMU with the R2 or an R3, the same. The TMU would require an entire site plan. That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
And R3 would allow the phases?
Well, a TMU could actually allow phases as well.
Okay. I don't know about anyone else. I'm a little unclear on the benefit of the R3 as opposed to what we have in place right now.
What's the advantage, excuse me, what's the advantage to Mr. Butler, to the citizens? The difference between a R2 and an R3 TMU?
It's the housing type.
What do you mean housing?
Okay. In R2, he can build a single-family or a duplex. In R3, he can build a triplex or more in one unit. And that's what he's proposing. He wants to build fourplexes. He can't do that in R2.
If he utilizes the TMU aspect...
Now, if he uses, that's true. If he utilizes TMU, he can ask for something that isn't allowed. So he could ask for a fourplex. That's true.
So it's not cut and dry then?
He would not be able to convert the dormitory into an apartment.
Wouldn't that only apply in an R3, correct?
Even under...
Well, he could do it in R2. Well, okay, he could do it under the TMU. Yes, he could.
Okay.
Those two housing types would have to be, would have to come through that TMU process.
Correct. So the theoretical delay in the TMU, does that cause you, Mr. Butler, an economic issue?
It does.
And what is that?
Because, you know, the interest clock is always ticking on the money that I would put towards the project. So, you know, I kind of have to plan this out with my investors and bankers. The, I hear the word fourplex a lot, but these are actually townhomes. They're not here to be served as rental units. They're here to provide affordable housing. Right now, the reason why you guys don't have a lot of builders here building houses is because of the economics of the market here. So just like in this report, there's, the average household income is below $60,000. Well, they can't afford a $250,000 to $300,000 house by themselves. And so what I'm trying to do is blend the two together to come up with an affordable housing option that what I keep hearing is low income, which has a stigmatism to it. It's not low income. It's people like your schoolteachers who might only make $28,000 a year. Or your 7-Eleven workers who, you know, need a roommate just to have a place to live. So I was trying to blend those two together. And that's the whole concept of what I'm trying to do here.
How much additional delay from a TMU would cause you to rethink the project? I mean, is that even a possibility or is it just an economic issue? I mean, at what point does it really become a problem for you?
I don't know from administration process. But, you know, I can get into big trouble if I say one thing to my bankers, my investors, that we're going to move along at this speed and then all of a sudden a second and third phase or something happens. You know, it can cause the whole project to go belly up. And so I wouldn't want to do that to them because the people that entrust me with their money worked hard for it too. And these are people that have, are giving me their 401Ks, their IRA money. So I want to make sure that whatever I get upfront, I know that I can stick with throughout the longevity of the project.
Again, we can also, if I might add something that... And I don't mean to muddy the waters. It actually might help clear things up. It might be appropriate to take this piece of property and subdivide off the dormitory and have that be R3. And then have the other part of the property be, remain R2 with the TMU on it. And allow him to come in with a plan at that particular time, whenever he feels like it. And he can still do the exact same development that he's proposing conceptually in this...
Because of the TMU?
Yes, because of the TMU.
So this is a, this is a new revelation?
Well, we actually, we, Michael and I, in a meeting, we actually talked about this, that he probably would subdivide after the zoning. But it might make more sense to subdivide simultaneously perhaps.
Would that cause any delays, like it would, significant delays?
Well, he would have to do a plat. And that would mean a survey and doing a plat. I, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there right now for...
But could he start on that building as R2 TMU? And then go along with the subdividing process and the plant?
No.
No.
Mm-mm. He can't.
So it would delay the whole thing? How far, now, if we...
Actually though, what we could do is he could have our, okay.
I'm a little puzzled why he wouldn't be able to start right now because it's zoned R2 TMU and the building's there. It's vacant.
Right. But in order to have a use that's not allowed in the underlying zoning, you have to have an approved TMU project. So that means a site-specific plan asking for a use that's not allowed. And that apartment building is not allowed in R2.
I would like to say also that I'm okay with the restrictions of height if that's a concern to the surrounding community. I know some of the comments thought that I was going to build a high-rise or something. You know, I'm totally okay with the restriction of, you know, two and a half stories. I never plan on building anything bigger than that.
Well, I guess maybe we should stick to what we're talking about tonight. And then, but it sounds like there are, there may be options depending on how city council feels about our recommendation tonight. So is there anything else from staff? Is there any other questions for staff? I'm guessing, looking at this list, that there may be some comments from the audience. So here's, the rules, we'll have three minutes if you want to come up and talk. And really, if the person before you just said the same thing that you're going to say, you know, let's leave it at that. So let's not duplicate our responses. So at this time, if there's any comments from the audience, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Hi there.
Hello. Maria Gamboa, 511 Forest Avenue. My main concern is this seems to be...
I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
Fire hazard!
You can pull the microphone down right to your...
I'm short. I'm sorry.
I have the same problem.
That's what happens when you're short, people. This seems to be like if maybe the roads going in between the buildings are a little bit narrow. It might be a little bit of a fire hazard. A lot of our houses here in this town are made out of wood. A lot of the surrounding houses are made out of wood. This looks like a real big fire hazard. Also, the parking out in the streets, where we have a lot of problems with the parking out in the streets. So these are two major concerns of mine. I live only a few blocks away. Thank God my house is not wood, but there is a lot of wood houses here. And this is a big fire hazard as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamboa. How are you?
Good. I'm Bridgette Myers.
And your address, please, Bridgette.
514 Pike. My main request is not to do a blanket zone of R3 on the property and change it. I really appreciated the planner's report going over all the negative impacts, the positives, and laying everything out to be reviewed. But it's a gross overreach in an area where single-family homes line the streets. And I don't agree with a blanket HUD designation. I think there's variations of financing that might be applicable to assist people. One of the things that I just heard and I was wondering about is could the dormitory be designated R3 separately, as a separate parcel? And the rest of the property stick with the TMU and the R2 designation? Giving the developer the opportunity to get into the dormitory, do their 42 units and start working on that? That's something that I don't know the details of. I think that the phasing is something that needs to be delineated for all the residents. One of the things that seems a little rushed is that we can't see a completed development. We can't see a balanced development. There's a lot of talk about the commercial property that's there and existing. We don't know what's going to happen with it. There needs to be some thought. Obviously, we've got a date now of September that we were just notified of that will have a big part of the financial aspect of this for the developer. But I really believe that Scholastica has a lot of natural open space. And open space should be a very big part of what's required of this new development. At least 30% per acre or there has to be some number that they have to adhere to. View corridors, maybe art, walking paths. The site plan that we looked at has gotten rid of some of the sidewalks that most people who live in the area, they walk their dogs, they run, they jog, they use that area. The vehicular issues right now were kind of mitigating, kind of self-mitigating. But when you add all those cars, 1.5, I think, is what I saw per dweller. That's a lot of, that's a lot of cars in a small little area. So I'm just asking to please not R3 blanket and ask for a PUD, a very thoughtful, well-balanced plan that everyone can get behind. We know that there's housing needs. But there's this huge area in the center where the phasing is not comprehensive at this point.
Thanks, Ms. Myers.
Denise, could we ask you to maybe name the next, the three people and queue up people? I underst... Do you have a list of folks that signed up?
We do have a list.
Can we, can we name those names and queue them up and ask people to be ready behind to speak with the current speaker?
If they have a duplicate comment, though, I don't know that they'll still want to come up to the podium. So is that okay with the audience, that you kind of come up as we go and no duplications? Okay. Hi. Name an, name an address, please.
My name is Kevin Cerber. I live at 525 Hazel Avenue. One of my main concerns is as far as property tax, someone's got to pay for the infrastructure that's got to be upgraded. This is a very old section of town, a lot of older sewer and water lines. Saint Scholastica has not had any improvements in that area. All of that's going to have to be put in. And in that whole segment of that, someone has to pay to maintain that. Someone has to pay to put it in. Our streets have to be widened. The intersection that I live at right now is pretty chaotic. They're putting a driveway right at that intersection. It's going to turn it into a five-way intersection. Five different angles for cars to come out of there is going to be extremely dangerous. I admire the city for trying to come up with the affordable housing and that type of thing. I just don't think this is the right area for it. There are many lots out next to, say, Family Center, Justice Center. Those areas have already set up for this type of thing. And it's not going to impede upon any of that type of area. The traffic, that traffic can be maintained as it is already. I would just like those things taken into consideration when this is all discussed and how it's going to affect people who already are there. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience?
My name's Don Paxton. I live right across the street on Floral. And a lot of the things that they're talking about here as far as trash and garbage is not true. We, a couple of gentlemen mow the grass over there constantly, so the, on the parking. So that's all kind of taken care of. And I guess I don't understand why we would want people from Colorado Springs to come down here and profit from us. And I think that would be a great community center. This swimming pool and stuff is already there. And he states here in his little, in his little notes that he may be tearing that down because it may be too much to fix. And it takes, I think, the community just needs to look at it for the community. With all the recreation stuff there, there's basketball courts, there's a swimming pool, there's all kinds of, there's tennis courts. There's a lot of things. And like the lady said about the park, they could make walking paths. There's a lot of places that kids could mess around in and play. And there isn't any in that area at all. So I'm not sure why we want, want to let the people from Colorado Springs, never whoever it is, to come down here and profit from us when with a little bit of money, it could be made really nice over there for the community. And again, it is a car problem. The traffic there would be unbelievable. I mean, there would be maybe 300 cars in that little block.
Okay, thank you. Hello.
Hello. My name's Marsha McConnell. I live at 810 Pine Avenue. I understand a lot of the reasoning behind some of the requests tonight. I think this additional senior housing would be great since that seems to be a lot of the people moving to Canyon City. I don't know as far as the affordable income ones. If they can find work in Canyon City, then that, I think that would be great. then that, I think that would be great. The other thing that I'm concerned about is if it's, I know that the 32 or however many units it ends up being are going to be designed for young families, and that includes kids. So, I'm looking at the schools, the school, Washington Elementary, which is also down there, already looking at being rebuilt or rechanged because of its age, and is that going to, how is that going to impact the school as far as bringing a large number of children into that facility? And I reiterate the fact that we already have quite a bit of traffic on, on our street, Pine Street. It leads right into the school, which is part of what it is. But I think that will be, also become greater. I don't know if that can be mitigated, but those would be my two concerns.
Thanks, Ms. McConnell. Any other new comments from the audience? Anything that we haven't heard? Is there anyone pro the issue in the audience? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Clune, and I'm at 604 Mystic Avenue. And for a long time, I lived in apartments and in townhouses. And it's not all that bad of traffic, as long as it's off-the-street traffic. And that looks like what he's proposed here, is off-the-street traffic. I want, would like to see a rendering. Do you have a rendering?
Yes, ma'am. We'd like to-
Do you have it where we can see it?
Are you talking about the townhouse?
Townhouses and apartments. You have off-the-street parking, and that's where your, most of your traffic is going to come from. You'll have traffic in the morning and traffic in the evening, but most of the day, you're not going to have that much. Okay. This was another thing I wanted to see, was what the house, the townhouses were going to look like. I owned a townhouse, and it was at least four units, maybe five units. But we had our own garages, we had our own parking. He's providing parking here. The other thing, I would want there to be a condomi-, what do I want to say? Homeowners. There will be homeowners.
Homeowners.
So, you're not going to have any trashy cars or any trashy houses.
Ms. Clune, Ms. Clune? We have to keep this to comments and not questions. I'm sorry.
Well, I have to have answers, or I can't make my judgment.
Okay.
But these, this should have been passed out. I guess that's the main thing. I just don't want any boom boxes. I don't want any really, well, we've had them in our neighborhood, where they, I'm sitting in my house, and they're booming my head off, and they're two blocks down the street. So, that's why you need your homeowners, but you need that off-the-street parking. As long as it is a great complex, I have no problem with it, because what we have there now is not so great.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clune. Ms. Bernath, were you going to say something?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Yes, sir, name and address.
Dana Paulson, I live at Hazel. Right across the street from the parking lots. I just have some questions to ask the committee, is about the wire, why the changes, and you've answered that fairly well. The zoning was under a grandfathered clause. The school, when, when it's purchased, that grandfathering goes out the door. And it reverts back to residential. That's under Charter, Chapter 1730 through 32 of the zoning regulations. They have to have a, before any decisions are made, it would be, be very wise for the site development plan to be in hand. Know exactly what's going on. The phases have changed three times since I've been following this. It's gone from Phase 1 was going to be the dorm, and then it changed Phase 1 to the, the townhouses, with the others coming later. Now, we would, I would like to see some finalized lines, and it definitely being, you know, the decisions made to be a wise one to have the site development in hand. That would alleviate the problems with the sewer, the septic, stormwater, everything that has to be done before, you know, anything can be done. Very important questions, the traffic, traffic control, water, has to be alleviated because you're changing the, what is it? There we go. You're changing 117,000 square feet of space into blacktop and rooftops, with no runoff whatsoever except onto the 7th Street and 6th Street, and right down Pike. You know, it's going to be a mess. These are the things that have to be answered before you can make a realistic evaluation on this. Because if it an R3 or an R2, going to just give a, an open door to whatever happens, changes planned back and forth again. This is what we have to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson.
Hi, my name's Kathy Bell. I live at 715 Floral Avenue. One thing that hasn't been brought up, and I, is the traffic coming off of Skyline Drive. When I first bought my house, like 14 months ago, I thought it would be a quiet street, but Floral is very busy because of all the traffic that comes off of Skyline. And the intersection at 7th and Floral is offset, so you don't have good visibility when you're turning onto it and people speed through there because it's not a four-way stop. So, it's really dangerous, and I just want that taken into consideration as well. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Brenda Claflin, and I live at 613 Floral Avenue. And like a lot of people who have spoken already, I have concerns about the traffic impact, a lot of other concerns. Mainly, though, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but I was under the impression that there was already a TMU on the R2 zoning that exists right now. And I just want to stress that an R3 designation to that property totally goes against the transitional mixed-use purpose. And it does it in several ways, such as, it does not reduce vehicular traffic, it doesn't ensure that the impairments of buildings and uses are harmonious with the character of the area, nor does it respect the residential neighbor, or area of the neighborhood. I, I feel very strongly against opposing a blanket R3 for lots of reasons. I, I think we need more time to consider the other alternatives, some of which have been recommended already tonight. The biggest concern I have, though, is that the commission would go ahead and approve a blanket R3 without a defined PUD. I think, as you can hear from many of the people, we need to see it. We want to know what it's going to look like. And I'll be honest with you, the concept, this conceptual plan that has been shared with us in meetings, in the application, and to us in person, have varied. At one point, it was going to be these high-end townhouses that would look as great as our homes. And then at the next minute, it's going to be modular fourplexes, and I state "fourplexes" because that is on the plan that was submitted in the application. It's here. Fourplexes, modular fourplexes covered in stucco. And then, the plan that just went around of these ranch-style homes, which you guys have in your packets, that we have never seen before, that's another vision. We don't know what the plan is. It would be irresponsible, I believe, to go ahead and approve this blanket R3 without really seeing and having in writing a plan that we can hold any developer to. Like I've said before, if you go ahead and do a blanket R3 zone change, and this deal falls through, now we're left with vacant properties zoned R3. It's another issue. I, I just feel strongly that we're being given misinformation as to the amenities of the pool. At one meeting, people are being told that they could buy gym memberships. It, it, so, in, in, in short, I'm opposing the zone change. It isn't right for our neighborhoods, and we're the ones that are most affected by this, and I, and I'm really hoping that people will listen to our concerns and considerations. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Claflin. Hello.
Hi, my name's Tina Rowe.
Something different? Hi, Tina?
Uh-huh.
And your address?
525 Pine Avenue.
Thank you.
I live there. It's owned by my mother. I live there because I need affordable housing. So, I just want to get into that just a hair. In looking for a place to buy, a place to own, I've been looking at the variety of what's out there, and I have some real concerns with the idea that these are modular homes that, that these people are going to be purchasing, because there's no resale. You have no resale value in a modular home after a few years. So, not only is it no resale value, but it's connected to somebody else that you may not like and may not be able to have a, an agreement with. I mean, I can't even get the neighbor lady to help me fix my fence. So, how am I going to get the person living next to me in my new affordable housing to help keep that up? I mean, yeah, we're talking about an HOA, but we've seen HOAs in Canyon City, and they don't always stick around. So, my other concern is, is that this is a really nice area. We have kids that play in, in the streets on their bikes still. We have families who pitch in with each other. My neighbor comes over and borrows sugar. I mean, we put 287 people into one square block? I mean, it's going to change the whole type of community that we have around there. It's, it's a lot of impact on how much traffic is going to be going down our streets. It's a huge impact on the ability of people to have something with some resale value. So, then in 10 years, what is that going to be worth? And I think that that's something that we need to consider. These aren't stick-built houses. That plan at the top tells you that that's a manufactured home, that that's a pre-done house that does not maintain value. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that's? Well, let's just stick to make sure that we're, we have new information, so as we continue, if it's already been said, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Pine hasn't been said.
Okay. What is your name and address?
I'm Shalon Mosher. I live at 6752 South Dahlia Court in Littleton, Colorado. So, that's not, I am not a neighbor. But I was a resident at 615 Pike Avenue in the 70s. I went to St. Scholastica, so I guess I could say my heart still lives there. I've had somewhat of a personal campaign over the last three years, when it became apparent to me that this property had fallen on hard times, to try to acquire it in some way, get the alumni involved, try to preserve the history that is there, but repurpose it and make it something that would be current and relevant for the community. Last year about this time, I was in agreement with a foundation that was under contract with the property, and went along with them, came in, was going to take my piece, though it was going to be the historic building, we were going to get the alumni involved and make that into a beautiful place again. That foundation pulled out, and that sort of, I lost my momentum a little bit from the last year. But, so I guess what I'm saying is different. I, I do stand with what I hear the neighbors saying here. I, I see their concerns, although it wouldn't affect me unless I was living on the property. But I do want to make sure that it is taken into consideration, that we give some sort of preservation to the history that's gone on there for over 100 years, and that it isn't changed so significantly that there is, that's just wiped off, that footprint is wiped off that property. I was just in Australia a couple of months ago. Interesting concept, what they do there, when people come in and develop an area, they do have to have so much of it, like what might have been said here, 30% of it that's public access, that people can enjoy that area. Might be something that should be put into place here as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi again.
Hello again, Dory. I live like a mile away, but my son, my sister, she couldn't make it, she's kind of had a cap and can't get out of her house. She's lived there maybe 20 years. She lives at 407 College Avenue, which is about, you know, you go up one, two blocks she's away. And she is into history, and it says right here that the, that it's listed on the National Historic Register. Not, he never brought that up, and, and I, I agree with what people are saying about the traffic and, and the children and all of that. And she does too, especially traffic on 5th Avenue there, and coming off of Skyline Drive, and how are you going to preserve history? And then, when that picture went by, finally, somebody showed the picture of what it's going to look like. My God, it's going to stick out like, well, let's not say. It does not fit this part of Canyon City. A gentleman addressed that it would fit moreover by the courthouse way over there on Justice Drive. It would fit better over there. There's room over there, and it would keep the historic value on this side of Canyon City and keep it historically looking over here. And that's about what I have to say. Let's keep it, let's keep the history going.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak on the other side of the, before we bring the applicant back up or ask staff questions? Is there any other points of view from something different? Hi.
Definitely different. I'm Peggy Bradley, and I live at 601 Mystic. If this is all approved, I'm curious about whether this gentleman or the developers will be hiring locally to help with construction, what the hours of operation would be, what kind of plans they have for the dust and dirt control, that sort of thing. It's going to be a long-term project, obviously, if it goes through, so to help ease some of the discomfort for the, for the neighborhood, I'd like to know the answers to some of that. And then, maybe it's not something that would affect me or a lot of the people here, but curiosity wants me to know what affordable housing is. What is the, what are the dollar amounts for affordable housing?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Butler, would you like to come up and address some of the questions that have been asked, please?
Just to begin with your question, ma'am, the, basically, well, let me, let me go back here. I was writing some of the comments down here. A gentleman approached and said it was a fire hazard, or it could be a potential fire hazards, but if anyone has been to the site lately, there's two big burn marks in front of the property that exist right now. I think with the dryness of the property and the, the grass is this tall last time I was over there. So, all it takes is someone to throw a cigarette butt out there, and that thing's going up and, and flame. So, I, also, the affordable housing issue, if I was to build luxury townhouses, nobody here would buy them. I mean, it would be, it's a matter of trying to blend economics with something that is affordable to the market that we're catering in. If I built these in Colorado Springs, I could price them at $200,000. I really haven't. As far as the historical site, that building, I'm not allowed to even touch the outside of the historical building. I'm not allowed to. All I'm going to do is remodel the insides. For instance, guys, I want to tell you some of the prices that we are looking at. Just to get rid of the lead and asbestos is upwards of $800,000, just to get rid of that portion of it. So, you know, those are things that's only going to get worse as it continues to deteriorate. So, I'm trying to find the best blend of the community itself. Someone questioned about a modular-type housing. Well, I'm going to use local labor. Howard Dundor here is going to be our project supervisor. Howard has done a good job of bringing in local electricians, local carpenters. You know, all of this stuff, I'm trying to do as local as I can. For instance, for civil engineering work to design the site, there's no one here in Canyon City that specialized in that. So, I got to go outside of the area to get that done. I'm doing the best I can to blend economics with affordability, guys. That's all I'm doing. And, you know, as far as modular and prefab, some of the builders, even in Colorado Springs, guys, I don't know if you've seen it lately, but when they're building these tract homes, a lot of them built in factories, in sections, and bought out to the site. And these are some of the best-built houses. They fit all of the HUD codes. They fit all of the city codes. These are some of the best-built houses out there, because they're built in a controlled environment to where the environment is so controlled, they can actually keep their cost in line, they can keep the labor in line. My biggest issue here is finding enough local labor to get a project of this magnitude done. Just to restore the dormitory buildings, just to give you guys an example, it's $2 million just to restore that building itself. So, I am taking a risk with my investors' money, who's trusted me for 25 years, to try and bring something blended here that fits, that we all can kind of come to some agreement. I know that change is uncomfortable. I really do realize that. Anytime you say change, people are going to fight me no matter what. I mean, that's just the way it is. So, I'm just trying to blend all of this together. I'm not...I heard a comment that I'm some rich Colorado Springs developer. Well, my wife just retired last year as a major in the military. I'm not rich, because if I was, she would have never been in the military, guys. The reason why I'm here is because I own property here. I already own property here, so I know the community. I've owned property here for two and a half years. So, I have, in my system here for my management, I realize that if I have a vacancy in my property, there's three people waiting to get in. So, that tells me there's a huge housing demand here. So, I'm trying to accommodate those things, guys, and I'm just trying to work with everybody I could.
Butler, is there any additional comments from staff pertaining to some of the questions we had tonight?
There are a couple of comments. I just want to clarify. They were talking...someone had mentioned something about open space, and the only...we have not what you would call open space requirements, but we have lot coverage maximums. In R2 and in R3, the maximum lot coverage is 45%. That doesn't change from one zoning to another, just to let you know that. We are hoping that, of course, that his plan comes in with an adequate landscaping plan that meets the needs of the community, you know, the community that lives there as well as the community that's outside it. But nevertheless, that's lot coverage. We have nothing in the way of landscaping standards. I heard someone mention something about commercial property. There has been no mention whatsoever of any kind of commercial activity here on this site, perhaps recreation, but not commercial. Infrastructure requirements, that is going to be the responsibility of the developer. Parking on the street, that would only occur if there was probably some sort of recreational component that was open to the public. All of the parking for the dormitory or apartment building and the townhomes would be on-site, just to let you know that. I think we've already basically discussed that. There would be a traffic study and at the TMU, PUD, or PDD process, during that process, we would be looking at that, and a lot of other infrastructure, stormwater, drainage, and those kinds of things. Adequacy of the sewer system, there is no septic, and the water requirements at that time as well. Someone also mentioned something about being a non-conforming use and mentioned the code 1730 to 1732. Not aware of non-conforming uses here. There are, as I mentioned, those two special review uses, and those are still active. If someone came in and wanted to open a boarding school, they could do that on that property, plus what's underlying in the R2 district right now, which would allow someone to completely raze that property, knock down every single building, and build 92 units. That is possible at this point in the underlying zoning, without anything else. You can always develop at the requirements of the underlying zoning, even if you have a TMU on top of it. You're not required to use it unless you want something different. So, I just want to clarify that for you guys and also for the audience. And that really is...those are the only things I wanted to...Tina, did you want to clarify anything else?
One other point is about the fire hazers. You know, when I've done this before, I've actually...I've already budgeted for one more fire hydrant. You know, if it's possible and I need to put in two more, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with suggestions that positively move things forward, but, you know, I do realize that some people are uncomfortable with change, period, and I know that. So, like I say, this project, just as Terry mentioned, will allow for 92 units. I'm trying to do it in a way that fulfills everything that's there, so there's less that I have to tear down.
Okay, thank you. Before I close the public hearing, are there any other questions from the commissioners for staff or the applicant or otherwise?
I guess, Mr. Butler, if...there seemed to be some consensus that if we rezoned the building...yeah, yeah. If we rezoned that building as R3 and went and retained R2 with the TMU on the northern section, how long would it take you to have a plat map ready? How long would that...how far would that slow you down? How much would that slow you down? Just rezoning the first phase of it, basically?
Well, I understand you guys can call a special counsel if necessary. So, I probably can...it would just be up to the civil engineer. So, I would probably say that I can probably get him to do it in six to eight weeks. As long as it doesn't...after that, it takes a while to get a special counsel together to...
Approval process.
Actually, if there's only...I'm sorry to interrupt. If there's only one additional lot being created, then it would be a subdivision exemption. That would be a staff approval. I would want to take a look at that for sure, but it would be a staff.
But there would be no change...I mean, the R2 TMU could be done exactly the same way you're looking at right now, correct? Up on that northern section? Just rezoning to R3 for the old building would just allow you to start on that old building and get the elderly housing going.
Yeah, and so, you know...
But there'd be no change really on the upper section.
Or it allows more time to go through that comprehensive process on the northern section. I think it's important to understand that...so, let's say there was a subdivision exemption done, so the one lot split to split off the dorm building and make that R3 with the...if the commission's recommendations are, then the other future recommendations is R2 yet with TMU overlay and going through a TMU plan, there may, down the road, be additional lotting occurring on that northern piece for any for-sale product. So, just as long as you're aware of that. But that would be in the future, and that would allow the dorm piece to move forward.
In what case would there be lotting? I mean, why would there be lotting involved?
For the townhomes, for doing a for-sale product.
Gotcha.
So, you have a fee simple lot.
Anyone else? Okay, so, Ms. Bernath, I'm going to close this public hearing, is that correct, at this time?
Yes.
And we're going to...okay. So, I'm going to close this public hearing unless you have anything else, Mr. Butler. Thank you for your time. And I'm going to ask...we're just going to vote on this, and we're going to go from there. So, in your packet, the big one that you guys have, there's two motions, so I'm going to call for a motion pertaining to motion number one and the applicable correspondence below. I have a motion. Okay, Commissioner Bates?
To the Canyon City Planning Commission upon conducting a public hearing on the above captured zone change request, and after considering the testimony presented by the applicant, city staff, and any other interested parties, finds the following. One, the land is rezoned, is rezoned, was zoned in areas presently zoned, is inconsistent with the policy and goals of the city comprehensive plan. Two, the area for which the rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage the redevelopment of the area. Three, the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for the community-related use, which was not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the city's comprehensive plan, and that such rezoning will be consistent with the policies and goals of the comprehensive plan.
So, you're going to want to choose one of those?
Which one do you feel applicable as far as those choices?
Well, I'd go with number three. which was not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the city's comprehensive plan, the master plan, and that the rezoning will be consistent with the policy and goals of the comprehensive plan, master plan.
You guys might want to discuss that, please?
So, in this first motion, Commissioner Bates...
Don't want to change it.
To my understanding, that is not applicable.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ledoux.
Item three would not be applicable. I mean, that's the...in my view, I guess the only two possible options are two and four. Under number two, the area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that is in the public interest. Obviously, we've heard counter to that. To encourage redevelopment of the area. The discussion on that is...goes into necessitate a zone change, and the reality is, we can do what wants to be done under an R2 TMU. So, I personally don't feel that that is necessary. Takes additional time, but we get the additional planning that this parcel does deserve.
I'm game with that.
Okay.
Makes sense. Quite honestly, I would like to table all this and send it back and get a better definition of everything, because it got muddy to what it two is meant to be. Well, so I guess I'd go with the number four.
That none of the above conditions exist?
Right.
Okay.
For right now. It's going to happen. It's just going to have to happen the right way.
So, then I would need a second for Commissioner Bates's motion.
I will second that none of the above three conditions exist.
Okay.
Okay. Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
No.
Mr. Dorito?
Commissioner Harmon?
No.
Okay, second part of the motion. I need motion number two in the packet there. Does someone want to address the second motion?
I'm already out there. I might as well do it, too.
All right.
Based upon the above findings of fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the council of the city of Canyon City. The total allowable dwellings for the St. Sclastica property are 7.5 acres more or less and total shall not exceed 92 units.
Commissioner Bates, sorry to interrupt. So, we're either going to...you're going to say we're approving or we're approving with the conditions that you're reading right now, or we're going to deny the request at this time?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We're going to approve with the conditions, the following conditions. No building newly constructed or renovated on the St. Sclastica property, 7.5 acres.
I'm going to have to...I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt. If none of the conditions exist for which rezoning can occur, then there's only one possible...
Right, the denial.
Denial.
Okay, denial.
Okay. Do we want to start the motion over?
No. Based upon the above findings in fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendations to the council of the city of Canyon City. Denial of the request of rezoning.
Commissioner Dorito, second. Okay, so let's have some discussion, Ms. Bernath. Can we amend that to state that there's just more information needed, or there was an additional option presented tonight that hadn't been discussed prior to our hearing this evening?
Yeah, in fairness, I honestly feel like some new light has been brought on this, and there's a lot of information on the table that I would like to get better clarification on, a better final plan, and a better vision. I just don't think we have enough information to...
And quite honestly, I got...you lost me with the zoning two and zoning three and what the difference means and all that other stuff. It wasn't clear-cut to me, so, with the TMU.
Well...
Or was it even necessary to go with the three?
If you don't want him...if you don't want this property to be zoned R3, then you're denying it. I don't know that coming back to you with something else is going to necessarily...we really have to address the request, and the request is for R3 with the conditions that we stated. If you don't want to have that happen, I don't think we need to go any further with that. Mr. Butler can make a decision whether he wants to proceed to the council with your recommendation for denial, or he can withdraw his application and he can go through and do, if he wishes to proceed, to do R2 with the TMU and actually submit a TMU project to us, if he would like to do that.
Okay, thank you.
But is the...Terry, for just a second, is...if one of the items that we are looking at and considering is actually still maintaining the R3 but in a separate parcel, I don't know that it's the thought that we all...we want to blanket eliminate R3. It's just a group...the entire property being R3 that we needed to reevaluate. That's why I felt like a table might be...
Okay. What we can do is include...if that's the consensus that you would like to make, is that you only want a portion of it to be rezoned to R3, we can put that into this decision, this recommendation, and take that forward to the council.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that was why I was suggesting a table. Well, I guess what I'm saying is that was why I was suggesting a table, because I don't think that anybody, I mean, am I alone in this, or does everybody else feel like there's, this whole situation needs a little bit better eye and evaluation?
Clear as mud.
I don't, I don't wish the table this, but I do wish that we can amend our recommendation to council to include what we were just discussing, that Phase One can be, you know, it's not a blanket R3.
Separate parcel.
So this, this, this would be denied as it's read. However, I guess that would include a whole separate hearing at this point.
It would, because we're talking about a completely different legal description of a property that has not been determined yet.
Okay. All right, well, then we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? The motion is to deny the request, and the second, and we have a second. Anything else? Okay, Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
No.
Commissioner Harmon?
No.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
All right, so that does it. Is everyone going to leave at this point? We turned the heat up for you.
Oh, yeah. Please stay for nuisances. It's going to be really quick.
I don't either. I just...
But that's what, that's what the consensus was, I mean, this is right now, it's not right. It was. And nobody here gives a crap, we don't understand, we're not right.
I don't know, but I'd continue with number 10. We still have number 10.
Okay, everybody, thanks for coming. We have a couple more agenda items, so if you want to filter out, do so quietly, or you're more than welcome to stay. But thanks for coming.
There was not a valid argument there anywhere.
Okay, move on.
It's going to, like I said, it's going to happen.
Absolutely.
Pardon me, pardon me, we still have a meeting to conduct.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, item number 11 on our agenda is a zone code amendment revision to Chapter 17. 44.050, violation and penalty as related to nuisances. Ms. Bernath, can I have a staff report?
Yes, I'm going to make this very brief.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to...
If you guys could exit really quietly, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
I have to open the public hearing first, I'm sorry. So I'd like to open the public hearing, the provisions of the city municipal code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as set forth verbatim. There's no applicant or anything in this situation.
No, this is the city initiated.
The city. Okay, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. About three years ago, the city enacted what was called the nuisance ordinance and created a separate chapter that dealt with how we enforce, or the city enforces its codes, including weeds, which is actually a separate chapter, and health and safety issues, and also zoning, because when there's, sometimes we do have enforcement with respect to zoning codes. So, what the attorneys have suggested is that the zoning ordinance be cross-referenced with the nuisance ordinance, so that any violation of a zoning ordinance is considered to be a nuisance. And we have that nuisance, excuse me, toolbox to be able to use with respect to those enforcement items. So that could include, and I did not include the nuisance code for you, I mean, it's very long and it's very thick. And what it basically allows us to do is to notice someone of a violation, and I have to tell you, we're very, I wouldn't say that we're lax, but we're, we give all violators ample opportunity to remediate any kind of a violation. So, and that would include zoning. So, but, if push does come to shove, and sometimes we do have to act, then those notices can turn into something that's a civil action, or possibly a criminal action, and can also involve administrative citations, which are something akin to a ticket. So, we are putting, we're suggesting that the zoning violations, along with all of our other violation types, be put into this one category or cross-referenced with it. And so that's what this does, that's Sections A and B, which is in the standard 1744050. So any violation of Title 17 can be unlawful and is deemed a nuisance, and then we deal with it under the nuisance ordinance. And without getting into a lot of detail, that's kind of where I'd like to leave it.
Okay.
In some instances, well, I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them. I did give you a section on what is considered to be a nuisance.
Any questions of staff?
One comment I have about the nuisance is there's something in here that's pretty And it's number eight, "Any activity, operation, condition, building, structure, place, premises, or thing which is injurious to the health or safety of the citizens, or which is indecent or offensive to the senses, so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property." That's pretty subjective. So the zoning issues you're talking about are much more objective than that.
They are.
I'm hoping, anyway.
Yes, they are. We do not enforce what, I don't want to say it in a way that's, we don't, as much as possible, we don't enforce, like, property maintenance codes, for instance. We don't have anything like that. So, unless you're, say, for instance, we come to a house and it's, and there are lots of weeds. We have a code around that, and it's very specific. But if someone has a bad roof, for instance, that's not a violation of the zoning code. That's not even a violation of the building code. And so, those types of aesthetics, we generally do not enforce. So, and I'm not sure, that's very, that seems to be very old language, something that may have come from, I know, I know. Maybe the attorneys really need to look at that as well.
I know we're not discussing the actual definition of nuisance, but it just struck me as rather subjective. Are other communities doing the same thing?
Many other communities cross-reference their Title 17 or their zoning code with nuisances, yes. They certainly do.
Their history or evidence as to the benefit of it in the community?
Well, it makes...
Or just makes life a little easier for...
Well, it makes it easier for staff in terms of dealing with violations. Sometimes we are more successful with one of the tools in the toolbox than we are with another. So, it's to allow the code enforcement officers to take action when they need to around certain violators.
Is this essentially, basically just to put some teeth into the nuisance?
Well, it's kind of, I wouldn't say...
For lack of a better term.
Yes, it is, it is. It's like dotting i's and crossing t's.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we have two motions. So I'd like to call for motion number one, from a commissioner.
I will so move. Canyon City Planning Commission upon conducting a public hearing on the above captioned zoning ordinance amendment, and after considering the testimony presented by city staff and other interested parties, finds that as follows. One, notice of public hearing was properly given as required by law, and two, the proposed amendments are necessary and appropriate.
Okay, before I ask for a second, it was, can I ask if there's any comments from the audience at this time? Were there? Can I backtrack like that before I get, go to the second? Okay. Yes, please. This round is 30 seconds, so...
30 seconds. You mentioned weeds, you know, growing in the houses. What about abandoned cars, like, in the street, where you could see weeds growing around the tires? That's obvious that the car has not moved, and logically thinking that car is abandoned, it has not moved.
Terry, can you speak to that?
Well, that could happen for a variety of reasons, but any cars that are out on the street, those are handled by the police department.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Ladue. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Motion number two, based on the findings of fact, I'd like to call for a motion.
I will move on that as well. Based on the findings, above findings and facts, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the council of the city of Canyon City. Approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance.
There a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dorito? Any further discussion? Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Number 12, are there any announcements? Is there any other business we need to discuss tonight?
If you guys don't have any announcements, I have one. And I would, I'm trying to think of where we should probably discuss this, on the 26th. We're going to have a special meeting to discuss one item on the 26th. I imagine that that meeting will not last more than an hour, and I thank you for your extra time in that way. This is another code amendment. But we will also discuss, so I would really appreciate it if you could bring your calendars. There was a discussion some time ago about changing the day of this meeting, from a Tuesday to another day in the week, and we are considering the third Wednesday. So if you could think about that, and at our next meeting, we will make a plan to discuss it and finalize it, because it has to go into by, we have to change bylaws and that kind of thing as well.
Is there a reason for it, so I can think?
Yes, and the reason for that is so that we can have an attorney present here, a city attorney.
We've been here before.
Yes, we have. And I know it's unpleasant to have to change this day, it is longstanding, but I think it's also very important, given some of the types of applications that we've had and everything, and the questions that come up here, it would be very helpful for us to have the city attorney here. So, please think about that, and we'll discuss that on the 26th, and it will just be one of our discussion items. But thank you very much for your participation tonight. That was...
All right.
26th is 6:00 p.m.?
At 6:00 p.m. on the 26th. Yes, we're going to start early so we can get you guys out of here.
And I guess my announcement is I want to welcome Mr. Dorito and Mr. Harmon, and the absentee Mr. Clark to the commission, and you guys came on a great night to watch me stumble and fumble through this with a large crowd, so...
You did well.
It'll, it'll, it'll go smoother from here, I think, so...
Yeah. I think it went very well, actually.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I'll watch the tape and decide for myself.
Yeah.
Okay.
The tape does come, is put onto the city's website if you want to watch it. Look under the agendas and calendar, I'm not sure exactly where that is, I think it's, anyway, if you, if you look, you will find it, and you can watch it.
Or you can call me, and I'll tell you where it is.
Yeah, Denise will tell you how to get there.
Okay, meeting adjourned.